And, um, thank you all for being here, the two of you. Um, Maria is our clerk and so she's gonna take some notes for us. And so if we could just go around the table and introduce ourselves so she can get the names down, that would be great. Let's start.
I'm Katie Woodcock. I've got two boys, one in middle school and one at Garwood actually. Try to make these meetings when I can.
Yep, we appreciate that.
And Amy Kemp, I have a granddaughter at Garwood. And I live in the school district.
Amy comes to a lot of our...
I do, I wanna be very involved.
Yep, we appreciate that.
That's great.
Your turn Rebecca.
Oh, Rebecca Davis, um, executive assistant and I have a freshman at Lakeland High School.
Uh, Lenny Palsley, assistant superintendent and I have a senior at Taylor Lake High School.
Jessica Griffin, chief finance officer for the district, we have a sixth grader and an eighth grader at Lakeland Middle School.
Her kids also went through Garwood?
Yes.
Um, Lisa Arnold, superintendent, I have two students who have graduated from Lakeland High School.
Michelle Thompson, I have, uh, there's students who, uh, graduated from the high school. I have two grandkids, right now they're in Spirit Lake. Oh, and I'm on the board. Throw that in there.
We appreciate you, um, attending. So, um, at the, the board, um, held a, a workshop for the strategic plan, a special meeting to talk about the strategic plan and give us some direction. And they looked at several of the existing plans and liked the one that I have in front of you, um, with regard to the formatting of it. Hi Randy.
Oh.
And, um, so, uh, but they, there were some, um, topics that are not in the previous strategic plan that, um...
Thank you, please welcome.
That the board felt, uh, needed to be in here, so, um, I have the document in front of you. And what I just thought we would do is, um, we'll refer back to this, but I have just a blank, um, template right now that we will work on formatting in something pretty like this, but to get the verbiage down. Um, and just start to create what we want that to be. Um, so if we just look at the first page, um, one of the things I talked to, uh, the board about with regard to the strategic plan is, um, it is interesting to me that we have a message from the superintendent in the strategic plan, because the strategic plan is actually the board's plan. So I did ask, um, the board, uh, it, it, we, well, I think what we decided, so correct me if I'm wrong ladies, but I think what we decided was that we were, we'll work on crafting, um, this message together from the board and the superintendent. So it's more directed from the board's perspective. So we don't, we won't touch that tonight, um, 'cause that'll be a board thing unless you wanna talk about that.
I, I don't have a, a column one way or the other.
Okay, so we'll just put, I'm just gonna put message from the board of trustees. And then we can, we'll fill that in. Uh...
And it may be that there's a, there's a message from the board or a word from the board, but there should also be a message from you as well. I'm not sure what the board is gonna weigh in on, on that, but that's what I would think because you are the...
Yeah, the superintendent.
overseeing of the district.
Okay. Um, we obviously don't have any students here, but we do have a district student council. And so, um, I, with the permission of this committee, once we get the language written, then I would, that would be a, um, just, I would take it to the student council for them to look at and see if they have any thoughts or anything that they would suggest that we add and then I can bring it back...
Okay.
...to this team, so that we do have student leadership.
Real quick, why would we wait until we're done with it to run it by them? Why would we not have them involved from...
Well, I can certainly, um, in the past when we've done this, everybody was all at the table together and was just a one night thing and we literally just went through it and tweaked it. Uh, so we're doing it very differently. Uh, I, I meet with the district student council this Thursday morning at eight o'clock, so I can let them know and I certainly can invite them, I just don't...
Yeah, I can, uh, yeah.
But some of them are not driving, like, um, like some of our Mountain View kids are not driving. So it, as we are working through it, I can, it can just be an agenda item for them to be able to be actively participating if they can't be here. Okay. Um, so it's going to be a very small list of participants, because there aren't very many of us here. And I did send an invite out, a reminder and, um... Uh, so, are you okay with that or, um... Do you want me to try to elicit more feedback?
Well, um, I think we should just work through this, see where we get. Um, as far as, I mean, it would be great if people were here, I understood, I mean, the long range planning committee is quite large. Um, so... I, I mean, I, I don't necessarily know that we have to have buy-in from all of these, um, subcategories that we have listed down here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, nobody's here, so I don't think it should be like we have to go out and get their approval...
Right.
At all.
Okay. And I think because we have the long range planning going kind of simultaneously, although we've put that, a pause on that...
Right.
Um, 'cause these fine ladies participate in that also.
Right.
Um, but they're, obviously the rest of that committee was willing to defer to the smaller committee for strategic plans, so...
Okay, okay.
Um, and then we'll have the school board members listed. And it would be, oh, they, um, yeah, they just don't have Larry's zone. Um, and then our buildings. And then our...
Table of contents.
Table of contents, thank you. All I could think of was glossary, I don't know if that was the right word. Table of contents, so we'll, okay. So the first page really where we need to start, I guess, is the right work. I'm gonna, I'm gonna glosses, but, um... This, this was, uh, when we wrote this, Dr. Reynolds was the superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
And the focus in Lakeland was really strongly on collaborative teams, professional learning communities, and, um, making data-driven decisions for kids. So we still do a lot of those things.
Okay.
Um, but one of the, one of the things we're actually struggling with a little bit is the collaboration, because this was written when we had late start Mondays.
Gotcha.
And so collaboration was embedded and we are struggling right now to find opportunities for collaboration because, um, teachers have so many other meetings, but, yep.
Right.
So, is, I guess, the, this is what they identified as the right work. Do we, um, do we wanna identify what we, what our current reality is and what our right work would be?
Well, and respectfully, I, in choosing the layout of this, it wasn't so much the extent that we wanna keep all of the language that's in it.
Right, no, I, that I knew. I just don't wanna make the assumption that this team wants to throw this out. So I'm just gonna ask about everything that's in here.
Okay.
Um, so, do we, I, I guess, do we need to identify what we think the right work is? 'Cause that's what this is about, like, who, who are we right now as a district?
I love the, that first one there. I mean, all of them, but the collaboration... Did, just makes sense in my head, like, if there's a student that's struggling, you know, it's not one teacher's responsibility. It's, hey, how come we all, and parents too?
Right.
How come we all, um...
We're all responsible for all of our kids, which was always kind of, that was our mantra.
Yeah.
Um...
So you're saying there's trouble, or not trouble, but just having more difficulties doing that, focusing on that because of late start?
Um, it's just finding the time to, to really invest in having really meaningful conversations. We're doing it better at the elementary level than I think we are at the high school level and the middle school, uh, because the elementary schedule allows for it. So we can get guest teachers and then pull a grade level team for a couple hours and do some of that work.
Sure.
It's harder at the high school. Um, but I would tell you, if you look at, um, research that indicates highly effective practices that lead to better outcomes for kids, the number one, um, technique or strategy is called, it's, uh, collective, um, teacher efficacy. And then the second one is teacher estimate, estimation of student success. So when you have high levels of collective efficacy where, as a team all together, we work better than we do when we're working in isolation, we do better things for kids. And then, um, and then the other, um, the other, the second one, the teacher estimation of student success really, um, speaks to that, um, that the kids will perform to whatever height you set their bar. So when teachers have a low estimation of student success, they don't, they just think that, you know, I, I teach first grade and they can't learn any more than this and so this is my bar. That's as high as they're gonna go.
Yeah.
But if I'm a first grade teacher and I know if I push them, I can get them up here with the, then they're gonna get there, because that's what I believe they can do. So that teacher estimation of student success is super important.
Absolutely.
Um, so both of these, um, kind of fit in that first one.
From purely an instructional point, all of these should be our focus.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if we want, if we're talking about being a school, a district of excellence, I mean, we should have all of these things in place.
And the second one supports the work that the board's been doing with regard to curriculum. And our high schools are working toward finding opportunities for that collaboration. So if, if we still think that this is the right work and this is what's gonna generate better outcomes for kids based on all of the goals that we're gonna write, um...
The one thing that I do notice, um, I mean, because we are trying to turn our focus back to parent inclusion, there's nothing in here that includes the parents. I mean, it is educator-focused, which is appropriate, but somehow I think we need to stand on the premise that we're not doing this independent of the parents, that we are doing everything in our power to include them.
So you could put them right into the first bullet educators and parents work in collaborative teams and take collective responsibility for student learning rather than working in isolation.
Okay.
Can you remind me why, um, we got rid of late start Mondays?
That's before my time.
Um, we, it happened when...
COVID or...
Well, when we went to double routing.
Double, I'm sorry.
The double routing on the buses.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So for us to have late start, if the high school's gonna start two hours late, then that means elementary's starting two hours late, which means they're not starting till eleven.
That's right.
So if we could figure out how to go back to the two hour late start, our, all of our schools would be happy. Um, but part of our issue right now is just struggling to find the bus drivers for the routes that we currently have without...
Would getting out two hours early one day be...
We talked about, I mean, we, um, that would definitely be a step in the right direction as far as at least providing up, uh, opportunity for that. Um, I'd just be working with parents to make sure that they can provide that after-school care. But if the high school kids are getting out two hours early, they'll be home then by the time the elementary kids get out for the families at least who have...
Yeah.
...kids in multiple levels. Okay, so... Instead of anti-collective, just, uh, say taking... For student learning period. Um, because working in isolation, I don't know how that would... Yeah, we don't need them.
Yeah. And then on the second bullet point, collaborative teams implement guaranteed, and I don't understand what we're meaning by guaranteed, so...
Um, guaranteed and viable curriculum means that it's not, your, depending on what school you are, everybody has, is getting the same curriculum, the same content, the same instruction at a really high level. So it should not be dependent on the classroom teacher nor on what material they're using. So the idea is that it's standardized.
Okay. Do you think everybody knows what a guaranteed and viable curriculum is?
Probably not.
Okay.
But if we have this here, when we get to, are we including anything about curriculum in here? Yeah, curriculum. Um, we can actually define guaranteed and viable...
Okay.
Here.
Through, totally fine, yep.
Yeah. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, instead of, well, I guess, I'm gonna just say, keep... Are we okay with the last four bullets? So I don't take time tonight typing what's already typed.
Why am curious, um, on the third bullet point?
Mm-hmm.
Um, through an ongoing assessment process that includes frequent team-developed common formative assessments? Are we doing that?
Mm-hmm.
Because that is one thing that the board has really tried to, um, bring focus to is how much assessment review we're constantly putting these kids through as opposed to like having them learning.
Well, so this common formative assessment might just be, we're working on a math concept and all the kids have whiteboards.
Okay.
And I give you a problem and you do your whiteboard work and you hold it up. I can see right away which kids...
Okay, so it's...
That's a formative assessment.
Okay, so not just standardized testing.
It's not test, it's, yeah, it doesn't mean tests. It definitely means, and there might be, like, we, we use exit tickets and so there might be some standardization there where at the last five minutes of class time, you're gonna answer these three questions and I'm gonna collect them to see tomorrow where I need to start.
The idea is that you're pulling anecdotal information to make decisions on how you're giving your instructions so you can map out a whole entire week. And let's just say you're, it, you know, on Wednesday you plan to be at a certain step in the lesson design, but the kids aren't making it, that you're making adjustments and so it's somewhat fluid and so it's those just intermittent times of formative of like, yep, I have five kids who don't have it, so how am I gonna support them? Am I pulling them back in a small group? Or the kids are flying through it and I'm not just continuing, 'cause this is...
Wasting time on something that they already can understand.
Yeah, so it's not really a, I mean, it's really more of an incidental kind of, it gets it quick.
It's actually built right into the instru, it's part of the instruction instead of taking time out for a test.
About where it says build the team's capacity to achieve its goals, who's the team? The teachers or the students?
The, um, teams, the grade level team.
Grade level teams.
So should we...
So that's not student, then, that's adult, okay.
I just figured it would be typing, but I'm gonna put it. Um, do we wanna define, so the, um, grade level slash department teams? So that it's...
I don't think it makes sense from a parent's standpoint.
The idea is that if you're having a, uh, let's just say there's a classroom that's having a lot of success with a specific instruction strategy, then maybe somebody else who's here sharing those ideas. So again, everybody is benefiting from the collective commitment of the group to ensure that all third graders, all second graders are being successful, that's the idea.
And then the last one, the school provides a systematic process for intervention and extension. Um, that will show up when we get, when we start adding the special education referrals and processes. Um, so we can talk about, um, MTSS, which is multi-tiered system of support.
Right.
Or the idea you intervene before we have to go down that road.
Right.
Okay.
So are we good with all of those?
Yeah, I've, yeah, I would just wordsmith, uh, bullet point three and point four, but we don't have to focus on it right now.
Okay. Um, okay, so then the next part is what is the Lakeland way? Um, and that became, that was kind of, uh, Mary Ann Reynolds brought that. She was just so in love with Lakeland and what made Lakeland special and she just named it the Lakeland way. Um, we haven't used that since she left really, so I don't know if that's something that we can just cross out.
Um, I do think there is a value in, in showing what separates Lakeland from everyone else. I mean, these bullet points are, I think those are strong words. Um... So instead of what is the Lakeland way, um, maybe it's who, uh, I don't know, um... We could maybe come back to that.
What makes Lakeland special?
Because unfortunately, um...
What sets Lakeland apart?
Yeah.
What makes Lakeland unique or strong?
Right.
So... I'll just put something here and we can, we can tweak it. My goal tonight is to kind of work through this and have a kind of this and then Rebecca and I will put it, start to put it into this format and then we can come back and word, word smith it, so...
Okay.
Keep your notes.
Okay.
So what makes Lakeland...
What's that, what sets Lakeland apart? I like that.
Okay, and then we can, are there any bullets under here that you want to address?
I would point out back to the last point, um, something about our parent commitment.
Yep. So we need, um, parents as partners. So if we're talking about what sets Lakeland apart, um, uh, some of these, in my mind, don't... I don't think it's to the heart of who we are. Um, like humor, what does that tell you?
Right, about who we are. We laugh at people.
Right.
It's probably not a good thing to leave her.
Could you say something, like, I'm looking at the, over here John Brown, the SUSE thing they're doing. I mean, in a way that could be humor, that's, I mean, what, is there a different word you could use? Um, fun, I don't know, something, because there are some, there are fun things that happen, you know, in the Lakeland School District, the different schools do, like our penny drive, the kids, I was in the hall today, those kids were, the things they were saying, we're gonna wage war on the kindergarteners 'cause they just won something, you know, and, and they're doing alliances between classes and, and, I mean, it's, there's a lot of fun things that happen in the Lakeland School District. So I'm wondering if we could do, instead of something humor, something like that. I think that's the, the SUSE thing is a cool thing, you know, that they're doing, that everyone gets invited to. So could it be something like that?
Um, so we have a strong sense of community.
Yes.
Does that get to what you're looking at?
Maybe, I don't know.
We have strong community partnerships. I was just thinking, but it, I mean, you have the fun evening events, but just on a day-to-day basis, I do feel like our teachers do a really good job of working to empower kids to take ownership for their learning, which makes learning fun, you know, they're not, we're not just talking at them all day long, so they're actually participating.
Well, what if students are our priority?
We're committed to their success.
Mm-hmm.
We're committed to student success. That kind of goes with courage to have high expectations.
Mm-hmm. I do like that language.
Yeah. Well, they're not just doing something because other districts do it. I mean, we were in school five days a week. That's, that's important. That, that kind of thing is what makes us different.
You could say innovative and creative, um, in our... Something about kids in our...
We need by example.
Yeah.
I like that. Um...
Instead of...
I don't...
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say the loyalty one, that one throws me off a little bit too. I'm trying to think of a way to say, the staff has commitment to, commitment, maybe we already talked about this a little bit, but commitment to students or commitment to the success of the district or, I was just gonna say like loyal vibes.
Yeah, we said commitment to student success, but I think something, somewhere we have to have something about, there's also a commitment to have a connected community, to be really...
Hmm.
You know?
You can get rid of loyalty and maybe add a couple of those in there.
Yeah.
Um, I think, when I think of loyalty, I guess what, what I think of is, we have a lot of staff members who are graduates of Lakeland, who grew up here, were so invested in their education here and so proud of what they, what we have here, that they came back.
Invested. Yeah.
How about dedicated and invested employees? I mean, 'cause that's just really what it is.
Dedicated.
I'm glad it's you and me.
It's 'cause everyone's watching.
I do it enough at policy committee, I'm like, ch-ch-ch, oh, bag of... Staff, perfect. Um, what I don't like on the courage to have high expectations, to me that seems like high expectations is, is like something we shouldn't be striving for.
Okay, so...
Um, so I'm not sure, uh...
How about just high expectations?
Um...
Or commitment to high expectations?
Motivated to reach beyond high expectations, something along those lines.
To infinity and beyond.
There we go.
Oh, but what you're asking. That was funny, people.
That was hysterical.
That was our humor right there.
There you go.
Yeah, 'cause we should just have high expectations.
But I, I mean, I will say, I think sometimes that takes courage.
I would agree.
Mm-hmm.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Well, there was a teacher that was, um, sharing with me how, um, she works with sped kiddos and her, she had one of her students who outscored everyone in her class on her, I think, I SA.
Mm-hmm.
And all because of her commitment to the student. You know, they worked together and they built and, and just, just super proud of this kiddo, that she really shined.
That's awesome.
It is, but that's, you know, raising the bar. I mean, we have the high expectation, but it may not be the same for everyone.
Right.
That level of highness, I guess.
And I'm, I mean, as a grandparent, I wonder about, instead of parents as partners, families as partners, 'cause you've got kids who are being raised by grandparents, you've got...
That's true.
Grandparents that are in the school like me, that, you know, my kids are raising, that my grandkids, but you've got kids living with aunts and uncles, you've got foster kids.
Yep.
So I'm wondering if family as partners instead.
Parents and families?
We just wanna put tribe.
Tribe, yeah. It's a village, it takes the village, yep.
But something, families and, I don't know, but something, 'cause a lot of kids don't, there are kids that don't have a parent.
It takes the village.
Can we do this? I just feel like it's important to make sure we're happy, have the...
Are you, are you meeting release today?
Yeah, I heard.
Partners.
Yeah. Um... Okay. Anything else you guys wanna add to that? All right, so our mission on this is wrong, um, 'cause we've changed it.
Right.
Every child, I can't read it, our mission stays, every... Child learning every day in all environments, but that's not it.
No, 'cause we did kind of, um, pared it down, we did.
We took out the, we took out the, all the other stuff. So it was just learning every day, but now that's not how it goes, there's a missing part, for some reason I can't pull it out.
I don't tell you right now.
We're, I can't remember. We're, I can't remember. On every document that we have.
How is it not in this room?
That's right there, Lakeland joint.
Oh, check that.
Lakeland district.
Daily mission is to maximize student learning.
Is maximize student learning.
Every student is growing academically and behaviorally every day in all environments.
That's the long version.
Yeah.
That's the whole long brand.
Yeah.
We have changed it.
In all environments.
Any children?
Children.
Are adding every day.
Maximize student learning to ensure that all students are learning every day in all environments.
We actually changed it to have it.
Okay.
Lakeland Joint School District maximized student learning to ensure every student is growing every day in all environments.
Oh, we got rid of the at. To ensure every student.
Is growing every day in all environments.
Every day in all environments, okay?
And then our vision is a community committed to academic excellence dedicated to student success.
So the vision never changed.
So the vision has not changed.
Same.
Same. Cause you don't need to watch me type. And then our core beliefs, we have not touched these since twenty fourteen. So we probably need to go through them.
I'm wondering if instead of parent, parent slash caregiver?
Hmm, for the second one.
Or parent slash guardian.
Guardian, yeah.
I think that's what you were trying to get at before, it's like it's everybody, it takes all of us.
Cause some kids don't remember their parent.
Mm-hmm.
Do you wanna clarify in that second one, like child successes, like success in learning, success in going back to. I guess I'll slip out of the mission statement, so the one up there.
Child's success as a student.
Success as a student.
Okay, so I'm just gonna type this one out.
I think that sentence should be gone.
Which?
The second sentence.
They are responsible for, so we don't need to tell them what they're responsible for.
Correct. Um, their active collaborative participation is critical, which again, we're telling them, I don't like that, um. Is, um. On the first sentence, just like, can you go back up there? I question, I would.
By number one?
Yeah, the number one one. We're stating all students committed to achieve at high levels, yes, I agree with that. Um, each student is a valued individual with unique physical, social, emotional, and intellectual needs. I think it's either, each student is a valued individual with unique needs.
Which.
Um, which, yeah.
With unique needs, okay? How about the third one, or are you still working on the second?
I, I just, I don't like critical. I really don't, I think it's negative.
Do you even need to put anything else? Parents are the first and primary teachers. Does it really need anything else?
Well, the first sentence is that they're their first teacher, but the second sentence talks about the the contin- the how important the partnership is to the success of students. Because if you're, if you, if you.
How about their active collaborative partnership with educators is vital to their child's academic success?
Is, uh, with educators. So I don't need the, with educators, is vital.
Or valuable.
Imperative.
Valuable.
I don't like vital.
Vital better, instead of valuable, okay?
I think vital is more descriptive.
Child's academic success, period.
Vitals, stresses importance.
Okay. Student learning is the priority of Lakeland Schools, all students will become. We demand, um, all students will become confident, self-directed, collaborative, lifelong learners and responsible citizens in tomorrow's workforce and community. That's an apple.
That's very.
Long.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Because that one and the next one say almost the exact same thing.
Yep.
So you could wipe out the second sentence and just leave that point being student learning is the priority of Lakeland Schools. And then, uh, schools, uh.
Needs the school to help develop.
Hey, yes.
I was gonna say something about the collaboration, so like back to what you said.
Yeah.
Um, I don't wanna say schools working in tandem with parents, but something in that effect.
Right.
Develop, confident, and then you just need to put that claimer, the qualifier at the very beginning.
Yeah.
Cause it's all of us. I feel like I've had part of my child's success.
Yeah.
Only one of my kids, so.
Well, what if we say, instead of schools, collaborative partnerships, partnerships, this is develop confident self, to kind of lead into what Lynn was talking about? Or is that too broad, I mean?
I s- I'm struggling with the word develop, because it kind of makes it sound like the kids are this piece of clay that all the adults around them are molding and. They're not really playing a part in it, like. Um, I think we provide the opportunity for students to become confident, self-directed, lifelong learners.
Or help encourage.
Yeah, I was thinking encourage or enable or.
Support. Support the growth of students.
Set the foundation. Build the, yeah.
So families and. And educators to, um, working collaboratively, support. Cause it's not just the staff.
Right.
The parents play a pretty big role in that.
Okay. So.
You could say to support confident, self-directed, lifelong learners who will become responsible citizens in tomorrow's workforce and community. So everything you just said.
So, uh, parents and.
Parents and educators working collaboratively to support. Or encourage. Confident, self-directed, lifelong learners who will become. Yeah, and becoming confident, self-directed.
Lifelong learners. And responsible citizens, period.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, since we have student learning is the priority.
That could probably go below that, instead of in front of it.
I mean. That should kind of be self-evident. Like, we're a school district, that should be.
Yeah.
That should be what we are.
One, two, three, yeah, um.
So instead of student learning is a priority of Lakeland Schools, I, I mean, our belief is that, um, we, you know, we're all responsible. For the growth of all of our students and that students can learn at high levels, which is right here.
Well, if you, I was gonna say, you could actually, so all students can learn at high levels, each student is a valued individual with unique needs. And our priorities of the Lakeland School, I mean, you could take that and merge it up with number one.
Mm-hmm.
So that it's, you know.
I like to ha- I'd like to see that the student learning is a priority, if it's a priority, then it should be kind of at the top of the list anyway.
Yep.
Well, we could take out number one and just make student learning is the priority of Lakeland School. It should be Lakeland School District, Lakeland Joint School District.
But I do like the, is a valued individual with unique needs, cause there are so many kids that learn so, so differently and the fact that we do have different learning opportunities for them.
You could attach that after, I mean, you could put.
Yeah, it could be the second sentence to that, number one.
Exactly.
Yeah, so number one is student learning is the priority. Each student is a valued individual.
So we're gonna take that part out, right?
That'll be number two. I think we're making that number one and then, um.
I think it's important that.
We could take out the first part of that sentence, so that student learning is a priority, um.
I think it's important to recognize that there, this is a core belief, it is a belief that we believe all students can learn, so I do think it's important, not really that, that part of that sentence in there.
And you want me to put this? There?
No, but, um. Well, Jessica was saying that she thinks stating all students can learn at high levels, um, should remain.
Not even necessarily high levels, you know, we talked about that already, but I just, all students can learn is important because. If that isn't our belief of the district.
Then we just take that, um, leave number, leave it just the way you have it with that as number two.
And put this one.
And then just put that as number one, just that straight.
Can I just, I'm devil's advocate to that?
Go for it.
Um, I think all students can learn at high levels is very ambiguous and people don't know what that means.
What about all students can succeed? All students can.
But I think that's very subjective and so that's the, it's really about the belief system that we feel like people.
Based.
At number one.
Right, so.
That we can teach.
This is gonna go there.
Anybody that comes through the doors.
Right, but I feel like that's being said in student learning is a priority of Lakeland School Districts and we value. All individuals that have unique needs, like I think that's one in the same, so I think back to what we originally said, you could take off that part of. And you combine, student learning is priority of Lakeland School District, each student is a valued individual with unique needs. That's saying, that to me is saying that high levels, so.
So, okay, we believe learning is a pri- that's what I'm doing with the core beliefs, you have to be able to put, we believe in front of it for it to make sense. So we believe student learning is priority of Lakeland Joint School District. And we.
We believe each student is a valued individual with unique needs.
Well, that first sentence could be, we believe student learning is the priority of Lakeland Joint School District. We recognize each student is a valued individual with unique needs. We, we could just put that to the first sentence.
But I do think we believe all students can learn.
Oh, I agree.
At high levels.
I mean, I agree, I just feel like if you're reading that and we don't explain what that means, that just feels like.
What if, instead, what if number two is each student is a valued individual with unique needs? Number three is all students can learn at high levels, so you're kind of stepping each belief, yeah.
And then we go into parents and guardians, our beliefs about parents and guardians, yeah.
Cause this all helps us get to this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, collaborative partnership with educators is vital to their child's academic success. Parents and guardians and educators work together to support students in becoming confident, self-directed, lifelong learners and responsible citizens. Okay? Or you could say responsible citizens and community members, I don't know, but this, um, I think it's a lot.
I think that, responsible citizens is good.
I'm a little nervous about the, schools teach to and and model a universal set of basic values, honesty, self-discipline, responsibility, respect, emotional. Physically, emotional, well-being, and a strong work ethic. Do we do that? I mean, I'm not saying we don't, but is that like?
It's not our focus.
Okay.
And then I think, well, I was just actually having this conversation today with a staff member, I feel like, um, for so long. All the social issues that our country was experiencing landed on the plates of the, of the teachers and so we were teaching more than just our traditional reading, writing, and arithmetic.
Right.
Type subjects. And we are in this very strange place, and I've been doing this for thirty-three years, and this is really the first time. That parents have been, have started to pull back on some of those things that have historically been on our plates.
Mm-hmm.
And saying, no, we don't want you teaching those, we want to teach those, and these are those things.
Okay.
Um, that, 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 that's where I see the biggest shift, is parents are now wanting to be the ones to talk about basic values. We definitely at school talk about honesty, we talk about responsibility, we talk about respect, um. So I just wanna be careful in how we write this because. There, this is the, I think this is the biggest movement right now with, with parents wanting that, the right to be in charge of these kinds of things with their kids.
Do you feel like that's more of a local thing, or you feel like that's a?
I think there are a lot of people who are here.
Yeah.
Because we allow this, we, we're saying to parents, we want you to be the ones in charge of this, I don't think all school districts are doing that.
Yeah.
Um. But I, I think that it's, I think it's a movement across the country, I think that's some of the displeasure that parents have with school districts is. They feel like the school districts are teaching the values that, that the districts want the kids to have, which may or may not align with the values that the parents have.
Right.
And that's why so many people have left some of our surrounding states and come to Idaho.
Yeah.
So, we just wanna be really careful with how we, if we put anything here, I just wanna be careful about how we do it.
Mm-hmm.
But then each school has their like, Garwood has bears, whatever, they're be brave, engaged, you know, they have those values that they are. Teaching those students that are outside the.
I think we teach character traits.
We, yeah, maybe not, maybe we stay away from the word values.
Okay. Yeah.
And we, cause we do teach to character traits, we teach kids to be responsible, respectful.
Those are universal things that everybody, you know, kind of, well.
Absolutely.
Everything is becoming so subjective, it's like.
Everyone take their own interpretation of it and run with it however they want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. What if, uh? What if, um, uh. Bob, what was I gonna say? I don't, I forgot my words.
Could we say schools uphold positive character traits?
Yeah, schools encourage positive character traits or uphold positive character traits.
And we could even put us such as if we want, felt like we needed to add some descriptors, respectful, responsible, safe.
Yeah, I think the teach and model, I think that that's a. That's fine to leave in there and just say.
Positive character traits instead of values.
Mm-hmm.
Encourage and model, yeah.
Instead of schools, it's not really the schools, it's the teachers. Or staff. Staff, teach to and model, positive character traits.
Must say district staff. It's everyone.
Well, what if staff encourages the development of? I like that one.
Yes, yes.
And then we actually listed some, do you want to do that, just so we have?
But I think also and model because I see Mr. Massey getting down on his knees at a kid's eye level. And very respectfully talking to them about something that happened on the playground or whatever. Um, you know, I see other, the teachers, I think, I like the word and model because. You know, I mean, one way we teach or, you know, or encourage is, is by modeling as well.
It would be models and. I was, yeah, I was gonna say models and encourages.
And staff is a, is a plural, so staff, model and encourage.
Okay.
What do you, I, I'm just asking the question.
No, no, I hear you, staff, model and encourage.
The development.
The development of.
Sort of models.
Right.
Yeah.
I would say develop, um, staff, model and encourage the development of. Um, positive character traits such as honesty, responsibility and respect. There, yeah. I don't know if we wanna throw self-discipline in there, but, okay.
We don't ever, we don't talk to the kids about self-discipline. I mean, we talk to them about zones of regulation and where they're, where they are emotionally and how to manage their feelings, but we don't really talk about self-discipline.
I have a quick question, can you bear with me, I do not have any kind of educator background whatsoever.
Um, which is why your input is so valuable.
Well, thank you. When you say educators versus staff, like, I'm thinking, I know of both Garwood family here. Um, but even the custodian is involved with those students.
Right.
When you say educators, are you talking, does that include everybody?
That's encompassing everybody in my mind, cause I think they all have a part.
Well, I guess the, the way I read this is, like, when we talk educators, we're specifically talking about the teachers and the paras. And the, who are directly providing instruction.
Okay.
When we talk about staff, it, that encompasses everybody, so if you feel like.
I, I read it as interchangeable, because I feel like, I mean, yes, teachers and our instruct, they're doing related to instruction. But, you know, when our custodians or when Mr. Massey, I mean, everybody's in part in some.
Right, but when you, when the public looks at that, when they think educator, they're not thinking custodian.
Yeah, they're not.
So if that, if this is the whole staff, then we should just say staff.
I mean, I just even think of Mr. DeMoss, um, our flag was tattered and he, we got a flag. And then he taught the kids about how, a group of kids, how to fold the flag and, and ta- talked to them a little bit about what each of the folds mean and.
I mean, our lunch studios go in and they're helping kids and teaching the manners and, you know, how to place settings sometimes when kids are asking. I mean, it's just, it's all of those things, everybody has a part, everybody plays a part.
Yeah, so I think instead of using the word educator, I think we talk staff.
Okay. Schools provide.
We have really great people that work with our kids.
Yeah.
We do. Schools provide.
I know staff almost doesn't feel. Doesn't capture. No, it doesn't, but, but what other word do you use to talk about all district employees?
Right.
And not employees, you know, volunteers and anybody that is in the school.
I mean, even the bus drivers.
Having an impact on a kiddo, absolutely.
I have a friend who's a bus driver.
And the positive influence she has on her kids.
We have really good bus drivers, though.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna leave them out because I feel like they, they, I mean, they're vital to the success. It's, it's all of us, it's every person that, you know.
I think this, that, I don't, I don't think we need that one. In this, I don't know, but.
We don't want anything in our core beliefs about safe.
Safe, yes, but the whole premise of this is to get back down to the expectations for behavior. Based on mutual respect, which we just said. We're tackling that at the point before.
So then we don't need to do it.
Although our core beliefs should be that the district provides a safe and secure environment for learning.
Yep, I think that's perfect.
Just saying it just as simple and sweet as that.
We, so if you're starting with we believe.
Sometimes I think we muddy it with too much vocabulary.
Provides.
The fluff and stuff takes away from.
Safe and secure, the actual message of what we're trying to.
Environment. The fluff and stuff.
For all students, sure.
I like that it thinks for me.
What?
I like that the computer thinks for me.
The predictive tech is. All Lakeland employees are educational professionals respected for their skills and commitment to student learning. They are essential, uh, to the achievement of the district's mission.
That's what we were just talking about, including the bus drivers.
There'll be so much that's in our doing this.
Schools are reflected in each other, mutual support, participation and partnership is necessary. Well, these aren't necessarily beliefs, these are statements. A lot of it is statement.
Here's.
So.
Although I think this, this gets to the heart of what I think really sets Lakeland apart, which has always been. That our schools reflect back to our community, the community values, so.
Then it needs to go up into the what is Lakeland.
Okay.
Ooh, yeah, good point.
Yeah.
What sets Lakeland apart?
Yeah, yeah, that sentence, the community and the schools are reflected in each other. Good paraphrasing.
Thank you.
I'm like, wait a minute, you're not typing that sentence the exact same way it was.
Short and sweet.
There we go.
Okay, what about all Lakeland employees are educational professionals respected for their skills and commitment to student learning?
I feel like we've already said that up above. We talked about how.
Where did we, we're not really talking much about. We're not talking about the value that our, our employees bring to the district.
I feel like we do in number five, we're all a part of supporting students.
But I think if I were to read that and see staff, I would think of the teachers. I don't know that I would think of the, the janitor, the bus driver, the, you know, the, the cafeteria workers when I think of that. I think when I think of all Lakeland employees, then I would think of the whole encompassment of this.
So, I was just gonna say, if you look at what we've typed so far, we've been really intentional about making sure that we are putting parents in here. But we haven't really said anything about the value of our staff.
What if we say our district employees, um, are essential to the achievement of the district's mission? Or, um, are essential to the. I don't know, the achievement of the district's mission.
The success of the district's mission?
How about just our district employees are essential to the success of the, our district? I mean, I mean, it's our district twice, but our district, our district.
You could say our district employees are essential to su- success.
There we go.
Our mission and vision.
Yeah, our district employees are essential to the success of.
As soon as you said that, I was reaching for the mouse.
Okay.
Okay.
So do you think that, I mean, that we're, we're landing on all of our people?
Yep.
That we won't be who we are without them.
Yep.
Yeah, because we have great families, but we have great staff, we have, I mean, this is a great place to be.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to this, these are the notes from the, uh, the board meeting regarding the strategic plan.
Mm-hmm.
Can we just look at these topics and decide, is this the order you want them in and then we can just start from the draft?
Yeah. So this one had. Curriculum, instruction, leadership, community relations and school climate and facilities. So first, should be parents' rights.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Second, long-range planning.
Does the order matter to you?
Yes and no, in the sense that I think when it comes to like parent rights stand out on their own. Long-range planning, um, that in a sense stands out on its own. Curriculum, um. Instruction, those I think are kind of.
Together?
Yeah, you, you wouldn't break those apart.
I think safety has to go after parent rights, I think that's a big deal for people.
I think you are correct.
Safety.
Yeah.
And then if you're just gonna kind of cluster, like, you could just do it in theme essentially. So everything related to curriculum and instruction could just be, and then you could do all of the facility type things.
Like facilities and long-range planning to me kinda go together.
Right, right.
Technically, um, probably technology, I mean, that's hardware type, I don't know, I mean, it could go either way.
Actually, technology.
Is part curriculum.
I mean, it could go.
Yeah.
But like performance measures, that's gonna be under curriculum.
Right, special education would be under curriculum.
Yeah, it's all instructional.
Right.
And then financial responsibility is gonna be probably after safety, don't you think?
Yeah, I think that needs to be up at the top.
Cause the other ones just naturally. You kinda can't do all that.
So where do you?
I don't know, the student achievement, i.e. curriculum and all of that stuff is. We said was our priority and then we turn around and say that. Parent rights and safety and long, and facilities are more important than our curriculum.
Do you think though, if people are reading that, it's gonna, I don't know that if I was reading that, I would think, oh, curriculum's down on the list. I think, I would think it was, oh, this is page one, this is page two type thing, I don't know that. As a parent, I would think, oh, they're not putting any, you know.
I would agree though, I, I mean, if, I would say parent rights, safety, financial responsibility, then curriculum, then facility. Cause curriculum is student achievement. I mean, I think I would just have the bullet student achievement and stuff underneath it, cause it's all, that's all encompassed. But then the facility part is after the student achievement. I don't know.
And in my mind, these are all like sub-bullets under.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. These are standalone.
Well, and then after facilities, I think long-range planning, well, I don't know. Well, because facilities, I guess the way I look at it is if we didn't have long-range planning, we would still have facilities. So I would think long-range planning needs to fall under facilities, yeah.
Cause it's long-range planning for our facilities.
Yeah.
And then you're really talking about five goals with different sub-objectives.
Which makes this more manageable when you have lots of different, it makes it really challenging.
Yeah, cause they had leadership. Community relations, the school climate. Facilities.
I think those could all be in those goals.
I do think that, um. Cause I don't know what they're. I don't know, do you think we still need those two? Cause then, I mean, quality staff will be recruited and retained, well, yeah. That's, I don't know why that's part of a strategic plan.
But I think you could, that's to me would be under, if you're doing student achievement, like, part of our performance measures. I mean, you could have a piece of that we're doing, you know, in high caliber teachers. I mean, I think it just naturally lends itself under there as a sub-objective kinda thing.
Right, and if we put a metric in there, like, it's our goal that we're gonna retain ninety percent of our staff from one year to the next.
Right.
Right?
I mean, they just bleed. Well, that's, I mean, that could fall under financial responsibility too. That we're not having to train everybody else's teachers.
Right, right.
We're retaining our teachers and. There's a focus of retention, yeah.
So we might be able to find places in these five goals where some of these.
Yeah, components that are beneficial. Community relations will be stressed with an emphasis on media relations and education foundation, educational foundation. Service learning and parent patron involvement.
So there's your parent rights stuff too.
So that, yeah, I guess that would fall under, right? Yeah, so I guess in kind of blending.
Yeah.
You can pull parts from that. I know, um, like within the curriculum. There should be more about, um, the extracurriculars that have walked away, such as shop. I mean, Bob's pretty insistent on that.
And I had a question about that, but it was a board meeting, so I couldn't just say, hey. Because what about K-Tech? Because K-Tech has got all of that, just got all of that shop stuff. And my question, I was thinking about that, so we've got K-Tech, why do we need to double it up and have it in the schools as well?
And both high schools actually also have shop.
Well, and I think Bob was also looking at pulling some of that also down into the middle school. But the reality is there's only so many seats that K-Tech will take from our district. Once that's capped, those kids are out of luck. So if they still wanna be able to explore that avenue, the school should be offering something like that. Because we've just walked away from the core, um, concepts of things within life because we're making room for others on it.
It's not, it's not unlimited seating.
I mean, it's my, I, and I, it's so important, my son did ROTC auto way back and he's thirty-four now. And he's the, uh, one, uh, shop foreman at a CDA paving, you know. And, um, so he's their mechanic shop foreman. And it all started, I mean, at home with my husband, but, you know, he.
Right.
Did automotive in high school.
Right, and it used to be, that's where it all was.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, it, for space and financial reasons and whatnot. I mean, K-Tech is invaluable. We're not, the kids, to my knowledge, wouldn't be leaving certificated from the class. But they'd be leaving with skills that they could take on to.
Makes sense.
Another technical school, you know.
Is K-Tech ROTC? Or no, do we have ROTC programs here?
We used to.
I don't know, I don't think we do.
Did we get rid of them? Because we used to have them.
I don't know if we got.
Cause those are funded, those are funded differently, right, then?
Don't have, I don't know, I'll ask that question.
Don't have the staff, yeah.
They're made up, they may not be. I don't, yeah, I don't think that, um, I don't think that's on our end though. I think it has to be through them. They have to staff it and.
Yeah, it's kinda like when we went to the Civil Air Patrol.
They'll support us, but we have to figure out how to.
Make it happen, yeah.
Yep.
The only other change that I'd like to see is on the very first page, like the cover page.
What's, what do you want?
I want a community dedicated to academic success and committed to student success, academic excellence. Flip those two words.
Dedicated and committed?
Yeah, I just think it makes more sense.
That was easy, thank you. All right, are we ready to put our thinking caps on? So.
Well, do we wanna go through this review? We have fifteen minutes. Do you wanna kinda go through and see if there's any goals that you say I hundred percent like? Or then look at goals that you say I don't, I wanna out, one or the other.
And we can just, I'll just write right on it, like where we would put it and then I can, for the next meeting, then I can put those things on this document.
And we don't even have to put all the metrics or the activities. We can just get the goals dialed in.
Yep, and we don't have to worry about wordsmithing. We just figure out where they would go and we can wordsmith.
Yeah. Well, again, like I said, it wasn't about taking this and utilizing all of its content.
Right, and so there may be some that don't, don't apply anymore, but.
Like the curriculum goal one will be aligned with Idaho. I mean, I just think that's a given. You have to, it has to be a goal for us.
Right, it's kinda the law.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
I do think the staff will teach, the teach, the district approved curriculum is important.
Well, that's a point, that's a good point. Um, and I apologize, I forgot your name.
Katie.
Katie.
Yeah.
Brought up was, do parents know that the curriculum will be aligned?
I think you could combine one and two and say something to the effect that says, staff will teach district approved curriculum aligned with Idaho Core State Standards.
I would say, and it's no longer called Idaho Core State Standards, it's Idaho Con- it's Idaho Content Standards. So the staff will teach and reinforce the district approved curriculum aligned.
Do we need to have reinforce?
With.
Yeah, they should just be teaching.
Staff will teach district approved curriculum.
Content standards.
Aligned with the Idaho Content Standards.
And then I just get rid of this school number one. And take reinforce.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to see something for number three, just, let's just call it what it is, but all school buildings will have robust MTSS programs. And we can spell it out, multi-tiered systems of support to address student learning. And they need to be robust.
So what did you say? All schools. Will have.
Will implement.
Robust.
Robust, multi-tiered systems of support.
I'm just gonna put MTSS on my thing and I'll spell it out.
To meet the needs of all students or something like that. You don't like that, Michelle?
Oh, no, I was just cheating. That's all, cause I, you went way too fast, so I was moving on.
And number four is a novelty, necessary resources, I mean, to be provided that are sufficient to do to the curriculum.
Which reinforces the board's desire to ensure that we have curriculum.
Yeah, I think keeping that in there is kinda necessary, even though it's kind of a given, yeah.
Right, well, but if we're gonna put it.
It is a given, but it wasn't.
I know, that's what I'm saying. It's leaving it in there to like, yeah.
And, and the budget is supposed to be written to support the educational program. And if, if the edu, if, if this is a goal in our strategic plan, it's part of the educational program and needs to be, it just makes it.
So can we say just district approved curriculum will be provided? I don't know, I don't like the way that's worded, provided.
When they have, when you look at what the activities are under it, there's a lot of stuff there in addition to the actual resources. They've got class sizes, building budgets.
Maybe this is less about instruction.
Well, maybe the, the activity is to measure that, I mean, they don't even, they're not.
I know, they don't.
They don't match.
That, except for number six and maybe number seven.
Building budgets. To teach the curriculum, so.
Or finances.
And I don't think that it says sufficient to teach.
I know.
It sounds like it's just enough.
We're just, we're gonna give you just enough to.
It's just sufficient.
Can we just say that the.
It is there to support and carry out that.
Well, it used to be, we were following the state adoption rotation, but they don't have that anymore.
This says the staff will teach, you know, can't we just say the, you know, the district approved curriculum aligned with Idaho content standards, can't we say district will provide.
Yeah, that could go.
Curriculum that is aligned with Idaho contents, I mean.
Yeah.
So we're not putting a.
So resources, yeah, for under goal two, resources and materials will be provided to teach the curriculum, fun line.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not on your own little raft trying to figure it out.
Okay, so we don't need a, we don't need school number four, you cross that out, right?
What's.
Well, number four's kind of going under number two.
Just merging.
Yeah, actually number one, because we merged one and two. This is very interesting. I'm just curious what all the world was thinking. Okay, moving on.
I do think number five is important, I necessarily love the wording of this. I don't like the word will complement the goals of the district, but I do think it's important that we have a robust professional development for, for ongoing and for new teachers. We're actually required by law, so.
So if we just say professional development activities for instructional personnel, teachers and paraphr- but see.
Shouldn't it be more than?
Yeah, it should be for staff.
Yeah, it just should be for staff, because.
We provide it for everyone.
Right.
Right. For district.
For district staff.
Staff. Will occur, period.
Yeah, we put together that whole list of what we do, which was really good to do, cause.
Will occur annually. And on an ongoing basis, I don't know. I don't know how to.
You don't want anything in there about complementing the goals of the district?
No.
Professional development activities for different district staff will occur annually?
Yeah. I don't know how to word that, um. To complement the goals of the district, though, that's.
To support the goals of the district, to enhance the goals of the district.
I think it should be to enhance education, because.
You could put to enhance the district.
Educational experience.
Or to enhance the district's mission and vision. Can we say professional development opportunities will be provided for district staff instead of activities?
I like that, yeah.
Yeah, opportunities. Yeah, I didn't like the activities.
Well, I think, but when we were, before, we were talking about staff as, as drivers, all dietary people.
They all get this.
Everyone has stuff.
Yep. So professional development opportunities, um, will be provided for district staff on an annual basis, um.
Continually provided. Um, on an ongoing basis. Annually? I don't, I don't know. I just wanna make sure that it happens.
To enhance.
Every year, but it may be something that is, you know.
You can put that under your metric, so your activities there just say.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, there we go.
That's a really good idea.
So we can just.
Sure, that doesn't sound.
Yeah, just say this will occur annually and as on a basis.
Right, okay.
And I mean, I know at one point, like, the board asked about all the different professional development opportunities we've provided, so there, I mean, we could even put every, an annual report to the board. Could be part of the metric or whatever, but.
We already developed that one, we can just keep.
Yeah, so I've shortened it, goal five to just professional development opportunities will be provided to all district staff.
Perfect, love it.
Okay.
Equipment, supplies and training will be provided to fully integrate technology into the curriculum. Yeah, we just try to be the technology leader. Yeah, no, we're moving away from that.
So this is an opportunity to kind of direct what, how technology's gonna be used.
Right.
Trying to move to less technology, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, especially in the elementary level. They should not be on computers in kindergarten. They might, I'm not professional.
Except that we have to teach them how to take the stupid.
Well, and the thing.
That was my outside voice.
My grandson was homeschooled for kindergarten and then went to school in his ISAT test, they do the first week. He basically failed everything cause he had never been on a Chromebook. He didn't know what to do. So now thus, he's actually, the, he got the highest score of all first grade at his school because he's a super smart kid. Once he learned how to do everything, he was like, excelled through everything, so he got the highest score.
Right, so what you're talking about.
Reason was, cause he didn't know what he was doing when he first got in there.
But there's, to me, a big difference from exposure and requiring all education to be focused on the computer. I have no problem with these kiddos learning how to poke the buttons and how to navigate to, to take the test.
Yeah.
I do have a problem when the whole curriculum or academic approach is geared around the computer. I don't think it's beneficial for kids.
Because they're doing screen time at home as well and parents are trying to get their kids away from screen time.
Right, and our high school students have said, please, we don't wanna be on the computer this much.
Just give us textbooks.
Right, and the reality is, yeah, when you step out into the big world, I won't call it the real world, cause we all live in the real world. But when you step out into the big world, chances are, I'd say probably ninety-five percent, your job's gonna require some format on a computer. May not be, you know, the entire work schedule, but you'll be on that computer. So by high school, yeah, definitely, they need more interaction with the computer, not in elementary. It just doesn't need to be there. I mean, expose them so that they can take the test, but curriculum needs to be, you know. Let's get back to their fine motor skill development so that they can learn to write. Yeah, seriously.
Yeah, or fine and base.
Yeah.
Oh, the first graders, they can't even write their names. I look at these, I'm helping and they're, the kids, they can't even print their name. I'm like, whose name is this? Cause you can't, they're.
Well, Idaho legislators actually wrote into Idaho statute that we will teach cursive in third grade because they were concerned that that was becoming a lost art form.
You wouldn't be able to read any of the founding documents.
Right. So this goal needs to address how we want technology to be used, so.
Right.
If we just do a simple goal and then the activities, could we say something like, technology will be used to enhance learning?
Not be the vessel for all learning.
Right, yeah.
And then we can, then we can outline what that looks like under the activities.
Okay.
We could even put in there, like, our goal for our kindergarten first graders is that they're not on the computer anymore than, I mean, if you, you could get that deep into the, what our goals would be for our kids, if that's what you wanted to do.
That deep into the plan, cause we're not going in the weeds.
I don't like that's a good sentence in our goal either.
Yeah, no, so we'll just say that technology will be used to enhance learning.
Yeah.
Would you wanna add something like when appropriate or when?
I think then.
I think age appropriate is gonna be a factor in this.
I would agree.
But under activities, we can outline what that is.
Either one.
Yeah. What was that?
I was just saying to Katie, that under activities, then we can, we can define what that, what does it mean to enhance learning.
Okay.
You know, that when kids graduate from high school, that we want them to be able to do these things.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
So, under instruction. We're demanding them.
You will be a productive citizen.
And how do you actually measure that?
You don't.
Right.
Yeah, you can't.
So do we need that goal?
I think your goal is graduation rate.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We can wordsmith that.
We don't have a few minutes, Lisa, disrespect.
So under instruction, you would have graduation rate, or graduation expectations to lead to be measured by the graduation rate.
The fir- the first part of these would be some of the SIP pieces.
Yeah, so I think so, cause you're gonna have to.
What we decided SIP was gonna be, that those are kind of our goals and then if we wanna have some additional ones, cause we did a curriculum one, so then just so it's apples to apples, those are the metrics we're using too, like, so then you could put in, you know.
Yeah, we did talk about the, the components of the SIP needing implemented or included.
So it would just be naturally what, whatever we put under SIP.
Right, right.
Cause otherwise, you're gonna have competing, potentially competing goals.
Right.
And then it's really more goals than you.
Well, and in the, this legislative session right now, um, under the funding, they're looking at, um, changing public school funding, so there are three buckets. One will be the salary-based apportements, so that salaries and benefits for the people that they're funding, and then the middle one is student outcomes and this falls into that. So we're going to get additional money based on our graduation rate, which is one of the highest in the states. We have to be at or above, if we're above the, we get the money if we're above the state graduation rate. And if you're not above it, then you have to be growing toward it. We're significantly above the state graduation rate. The number of dual credits earned at the high school level and the number of CTE and the number of.
Certifications.
CTE certifications and then the number of, um, AA degrees earned for the graduation. So we, um, under this gradu- we can write this goal so that we talk about the graduation expectations and then we can put those things that we know we're gonna get, the money's tied to.
I just think that would make sense, cause those are all things that we should be focused on. I think, I think all of the outcome-based measures that we are supposed to monitor should be part of our instruction.
Yep.
So I would just put that outcome-based measures.
You start the trend.
It's your car.
You don't have a smart car like that?
I don't have a smart, smartish.
So it is, it is six fifty-nine, so do we wanna, when we come back together, um, I'll work with Rebecca and we'll have this information that we did tonight kind of formatted.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, we can continue through, um, these goals. Or we can just start with curriculum and start writing the activities that go under it, but.
Okay.
How do you wanna move that forward? You wanna finish going through the.
However you wanna do it.
Might make most sense to go, finish going through these goals, because we might find, find some here that go back to curriculum.
Okay.
Okay. So.
Yeah, just keep flipping through.
Yep, okay, and so this meeting is adjourned. It is seven o'clock.